Maybe somebody in there can lead the flag salute?
All right. I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody get a chance to read the meeting minutes from November eighteenth, twenty twenty twenty?
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Meeting minutes as read.
So the motion from Commissioner Cole to approve the meeting minutes from the eighteenth, do we have a second?
A second.
So we have a second from Carla to approve meeting minutes from November eighteen, twenty twenty, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I believe the motion carries unanimously. So I guess Barry, we can move into whole business and just start with the the PAPA zero one dash twenty twenty and city council decision.
The city council decision, we had to go clear into the January meeting, so we had two new counselors and a new mayor. And their first order of business was a public hearing where the planning commission was deadlocked. We went through the second hearing in front of the the council, the city council. And the city council voted, but voted six to one, I believe, to deny the request. So that that Papa is, it's almost through its appeal period to where we can send in the notice that it was denied and no appeal was made. Just thought I'd give you a heads up that that's how it was voted on.
Okay. So I guess if there's no questions on that, we can move into the next item on the agenda, partition of tax lot to.
Yes. December eighteenth of twenty twenty, we had an application for a partition of a lot of twelve point eleven acres, which is down in the port and inside the city limits. They wanted to partition off a twelve point one one acre parcel. The parcel would is off of a thirty six point two one acre parcel, so. And it's down right by the railroad tracks and the railroad bridge, just inside the city limits. After review of the preliminary plat, it was determined the request would be a type two administrative decision in accordance with Boardman Development Code four point three point one two zero sub A. As only two lots were created off of the one lot. Public notice was posted and published for the partition and the preliminary plat review on January fifth of twenty twenty one. As of five P M, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, no comments were received on the request for partition of the preliminary plat, so this this preliminary plat was approved. This, we also got a request from the port for another partition from a lot that is predominantly in Morro County Tax Map four N twenty five oh two, which is outside of the city limits and outside of the urban growth boundary. Normally, this would have been a a partition to the county or Morro County or a joint between the county and the city. As part of the lot that is predominantly in in section two is is part of a large, much larger parcel in in section two. And the part that is being partitioned off is entirely within the city limits and urban growth boundary. And so the Morro County, Jake had actually talked to Tamara Mabbitt and the county planner. And Tamara said she looked through whatever I put together for that because at this point, the only part of the parcel was it was all going to be within the city limits, so. So I had went ahead and did made the land use decision. On December eighteenth, we received that partition request. On December nineteenth or eighteenth, the city received application petition for annexation of, this was in two thousand and seventeen. The city received an application to petition for an annexation two hundred and eleven point three eight acres of Port of Morro industrial land. The properties included in the Port of Morro request are as follows. Morro County Tax Map twenty five east two, number one hundred seven point nine four acres. Tax lot number one twelve, which is thirteen point three seven acres. Morro County Tax Map four N twenty five east three, number one oh one, twelve point seventeen acres. And Morro County Tax Map four N twenty five E ten, tax lot one hundred forty six point six four acres. The properties, these these were all noticed, it got public notice and we got no, no comment on the one for tax lot four N twenty five eleven, tax lot number two hundred point nine acres, number two oh one, forty eight point three two acres, number two oh three, fifteen point six acres, number four oh one, which is twenty acres. And notices went out to Morro County Tax Map four N twenty five E two, number one hundred, the same ones that are up above. Morro County Tax Map four N twenty five three one oh one and Morro County Tax Map four north twenty five east, number ten, tax lot number one hundred. On January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the properties above were annexed into the city of Boardman. The highlight, the highlighted property is the subject of this partition and preliminary plat request. After after review of the partition and preliminary plat, it was determined that the request would be a type two administrative decision in accordance with Boardman Development Code four point three point one twenty sub A. As only two lots were created and notice was, public notice was posted on January fifth of twenty twenty one. And as of five P M, January twenty fifth, no comments were received on the request for partition of the preliminary plat. So this partition and preliminary plat request have met relevant requirements of B D C four point three point one hundred and four point three point four hundred, three point four hundred for partitions and preliminary plat approvals. The partition preliminary plat request is approved pending final plat review. It was a little bit different took me a while to understand why we're we're in a different section than what that was in the city. On twelve twenty two, we got a land use application for roadway dedication. And the entrance to the port office building and the and the river lodge is going to be dedicated to public use and which will allow pending development to be able to put in streets in between that and marker forty. And marker forty driveway down to the to the to the beach was also dedicated. Port will maintain maintenance and and ownership of the of the two roadways and jurisdiction of the two roadways. But we will be able to hook with this dedication, we will be able to hook additional city streets and so on and so forth in between in between those two roads for potential development. And those were approved as well. And Boardman's Bailey Park subdivision, it is a twenty nine unit subdivision. And it is going, wait a minute. Yeah, that's just progress. The water and sewer end, the power has not been put in yet. Some of the other utilities, gas, all the crossings have been put in. They want to get to doing the grading and get the utilities in such as they've got electrical conduit has been put in some of it, but not all of it. And on River Ridge three, they just, they've just got their, U E C is working on it just as the snow hit. They've got about, they've got the transformer pad set. And they were pulling wire when I went out there yesterday, so. Those are those two subdivisions that are currently ongoing. And so if you want to move to new business.
Go ahead. If anyone has any questions, I think we can move right into new business.
Okay, on January twenty seventh of twenty one, we received a partition request from A one hospitality. And Jackie, can you put that that screen up? It's the very one, the last one of the.
I don't think I have the packet on this user.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They're breaking off parcel, an upcoming development, commercial development. It's the same parcel that the fire department is working to get. And A one hospitality is the owner. This parcel will be right at one acre. And it's for retail, commercial store. And it's going to you, you know, and I've already got a site plan from the proposed developer. And this is the process that this has to be done before they could submit the site plan for approval. The site plan would go through site team to be have the utilities and emergency services. Agencies have an opportunity to have a say in it before we bring, before I bring it to planning commission. This would normally be a type two decision. But because it's commercial and it's dealing with a main street access, an existing main street access, I want to bring it in for the council or commission to look at. So that'll be at our next meeting.
Hey Barry, I've got a quick question on the parcel, and this is just for curiosity, I was in a conversation with a past commissioner at the planning commission. And for some reason, he thought that this parcel several years ago went through a zone change. And I was just curious if that was, if that, if that was true or or if it fell through or what happened on that?
The zone change, the zone change was quite a few years ago, it was never recorded. So it's that that's, it remains as a commercial property.
Okay, all right, I was curious if that's what happened.
Department is going to have the balance of the lot, whether they partition off another one along Main Street or not as a commercial. And the the use, our department would be, you know, the emergency services would be an allowable use in the zone as well. I gotta quit looking there so I can talk into the microphone. Okay. So anyway, that's any more questions on that? Hearing done, I'll go to the next. We have a subdivision request from Gary and Carol Mon Ron McKenna is acting as their applicant and agent. And what they want to do is they want to partition twenty eight lots on Chaparral, I don't know if you can see that the map, the yellow portion is are the twenty eight lots that they're going to separate and partition. And that will be a hearing that we'll be having. Let me see, seventeenth, we'll be meeting next month on the seventeenth as well. And we'll have three hearings basically to go through this, the one with the A one hospitality and Chaparral Estates, which is Gary and Carol Mon.
Hey, just a couple of questions, I, this is the first time I've looked at it, Barry, is the the new road, the Mount Adams Avenue, does that come out straight across from the existing Mount Adams?
It's where where Mount Adams is add on that. When they did the master plan, that was, that was exactly what we were trying to do is to match it up with Mount Adams.
Okay. And the, I see a bunch of lots are going to be frontage on on Faler Road. Is there any issues with that or is Faler, I didn't know what the classification of Faler was, a collector or what it was, but I saw lots ten, eleven, twelve, and then the future development fifty three down to forty three.
It would have been, it would, it would have been a, it would have been a problem before two years ago when we got the additional right of way dedicated. And so those those blockage trees are going to end up coming out, a bunch of them did when we put the twenty four inch transmission line in. And so those will probably come out for those out to be able to build those houses. Which might, might give PD fast a little better shot at getting the towers to get down to the places that still not yet. Any other questions?
It looks like the lot layout's a little different than their first, because their first phase was townhomes, it looks like the lot sizing is a little bit different this go around.
In the original master plan, they wanted to do the condos. So they did the 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 townhouse development. And those lots are sized to be able to do a common wall townhome construction on both sides of the street. The rest of these are all going to be single family residential. That was the talent, the condos were basically to allow for a buffer between Wilson Road Trailer Park and what is the one that's was put in by Hudson. And it's seven trailers and a duplex. And it was, those are kind of from the single family residential.
Cool.
Anything else? Okay. We have also, I think it was the same day, we got both of them. No, it was three days later. On the eleventh of February, we got a land use application for a subdivision. And this will be Tuscany three. And it's going to be fifty one lots. It will be further to the south behind where Tuscany one and Tuscany two are going clear over to Dan McCarty's field. So that will be noticed, public notice will go out on that first of next week. If I don't get it out before, before then. And then we will have a public hearing on that. This too will also have to go before site team. And I haven't tried a site team with Zoom yet. But that's with with those, with these three projects, I'm, I'm going to reach out to the agencies and see if they have any comments from the drawings that we send out. And I've got the full set of drawings for for Tuscany three already. I don't have the full set of construction, construction drawings yet for the Chaparral phase.
So I had a quick question on this one, Barry, the, what's the zoning to the property on the south side of this phase?
It's a county, it's county zoning, it's not in the city limits.
Oh, so that's a, that's a city limit is the.
It's in the, that that property is in the, in the urban growth boundary, but it's not within the city limits.
Oh, really? Okay.
Dan McCarty owns it. Now, the hundred and some odd acres across the Main Street, that's in the city limits. But that right across from from the Baker's Old House is not.
I just saw this, the future road they've got listed in there. I'm sure it's, you know, something to discuss on the next expansion, not necessarily on this one, but it seems kind of inefficient, it kind of runs along the backs of a bunch of lots where you couldn't offset it another set of lots if there's ever another development in there.
Until it comes in, you know, we have to have a request for annexation.
Yeah. I was just, what I was pointing out, Barry, maybe this is a mistake on the plans. But there's kind of a, on the right, like the right half of their of their boundary, it shows like half of that road being part of this subdivision.
Dedication of that will be to because they don't own the thirty foot on the other side because it's outside the city limits. The thirty foot is going in and should that come into the city, there would end up being a sixty foot right of way put there in order to be able to create another street to get into the subdivision. As you notice, what they show as Naples is actually Tatum. We changed the name of that street because it tied in with Tatum. And that would be a way out, and then Anthony Drive would be another opening onto that road. It's kind of a macro grid approach in of of blocking it, so there's multiple accesses into into the subdivisions.
No, I guess, do you see where I'm talking where the the southern line of their proposed subdivision changes about halfway down through there, looks like it a section line?
Yeah, well, where there, where where it changes, that will, that that will be put into the city limits. The other thirty foot a right of way has already been gotten when River Ridge went in. So that, 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 that portion has already been dedicated. This portion that's in the crosshatch has not been dedicated yet.
Yeah.
So I have a question, speaking of this future road, so down the future road there is just the backside of all these houses, like a fence line at the backside of all these houses, none of those will be fronting towards that street. They'll all be fronting inside.
Correct.
So we'll just have like one side of the street will be just like a fence line of all backyards, okay?
And I maybe, you know, I, I guess it's kind of up to the developer in the city, but it might be, you know, it might be wise to to try to leave that little thirty foot strip on the east half of this development out of the subdivision plan, because it kind of makes the process of if the next chunk to the south ever gets put into the city, annexed in and and you have another street of development down through there optimally where that future road is would be another row of houses. And your future road action, road would actually be on the south side of another row of houses. But the way it's drawn on that, only the east half of the checkered stuff, it looks like part of that road is going to be inside of this subdivision. So then having to change that for the next phase might be kind of more difficult. I guess is all I was pointing out.
Well, that's, that's one of the things, that's part of the reason I'm bringing it to you guys tonight because I haven't had a chance to do much in the way of the review on this yet.
I just pointed out, it might be, you know, something to talk about during the hearing and and hopefully they've got a representative there next, you know, next month, so.
I'm sure they will. And we'll have, you know, we're going to be doing it by Zoom, of course. And and that's, that's all I have for new business, if you have any other questions.
I don't think I've got anything, Barry, unless somebody else does.
The discussion items, we've still got some action, there's some items on the table such as code revisions and things like that. And we're going to have a little bit of help from a consultant that that we're going to, to help with getting some of that that language put together. Carla McLean, the former county planner is is going to work with us on that. We've got a couple of things that she's going to be taking care of because it's getting harder and harder to get all of this stuff done at the same time. Which is me out in the, out in the field and in the office. Any other things that you guys want to see put into code language? I, I have found another little item to, to add to that list that I've given you before. In the Boardman Comprehensive Plan in Chapter Eight Recreational Needs, and there's supposed to be zero point one five of an acre, which I think comes out to around six hundred and twenty square feet of park. It is to be put in. One of the things that we're going to want to take a look at is, okay, if you don't have a park, what's, what's the cost to that six hundred and twenty square foot? So we can add up the number of, of lots to put towards parks.
So yeah, it's actually, you know, that's an interesting thing to talk about. Because it's, I, as we keep, you know, building on the south side of the freeway, you know, we've got a few schools down there, but is there any parks on the south side of the freeway? I don't think there is. Is there, Barry?
Oh, there's one here in City Hall.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
We have one in Sunridge Terrace. But it's just grass now.
It's just a swing set.
Just a swing set. It doesn't have a bunch of playground equipment.
Yeah.
Then the proximity of this to the school with the amount of play equipment that they have at Wendy River. And, you know, it's how, how much that does, how much of the school property figures into that is, is a discussion that I think we should undertake.
Yeah, as, as the city continues to grow and we keep getting all these new subdivisions, you know, maybe even the thought, you know, I don't know where the right spot is, but somewhere, you know, another park on the south side wouldn't be a, you know, bad idea if the opportunity arises. That's, you know, some.
There's, there's one park on the north side that has intrigued me ever since its inception. It was, it was basically where the old alignment of Main Street is. There's a little kind of a pie wedge on a, on a, on a, the old intersection turn. And that park gets used a lot. I mean, there's kids out there all the time.
Yeah.
And there's no playground equipment or anything. It's just they're playing soccer, throwing the football around. So it's just a little pocket park.
Yeah, you know, as, as our community diversifies, it's like, there's a bunch of needs arising. I think, you know, the, the dog park, I believe there's a dog park that somebody's working on, right, Barry, already?
Yeah, or he is.
Okay, and, and then on top of that, even, you know, not just little kids, but, you know, a combined use park for, you know, like barbecues or get togethers or, you know, stuff like that. Wouldn't be a bad idea if, if, you know, the, the right spot presented itself.
And part of, part of what we did with Tuscany two is we create, or yeah, it was part of Tuscany two was creating a, a back door into the, into the two schools from the subdivision so they don't have to walk away all the way down Anthony and all the way down Tatum to get to the schools. Which all might be to the, to the playgrounds.
Well, the only problem with the school one, Barry, is was, I guess you can, you know, tell me if I'm wrong with city parks, but city parks, I could have a beer while my kids are playing on a swing set. I don't think that's kosher on a school, school property, right?
Probably not.
But anyways.
That's what beer jackets.
What was that?
If that's what beer jackets are for.
Yeah. Well, unless anybody has anything else, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Adjourn.
And do you guys want paper packets for the public hearings?
I do, please.
I do.